Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Nothing else? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, item three, public hearing. Or I'm sorry, 3.1. Discussion on possible action regarding bill number 372 associated with ANX 25001, a petition from M4 Victory Power QOZB LLC to annex parcel 021-031-13, containing approximately 107.87 acres and generally located east of Interstate 80, west of Fernley Sink Lake, northeast of Duffy Road, and north of existing Victory Logistics Plan Development to the city of Fernley. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Elisa Johansson, senior planner for the record. As mentioned, I am here to discuss a voluntary annexation petition. The 107.87 acre parcel is located in northeast Fernley. It is a Lyon County island within city limits. I'll go into more detail as to what that means in a few slides. The surrounding jurisdictional and ownership pattern is fairly complicated. North and east of the site are some additional City of Fernley parcels, Interstate 80, Churchill County, and also Lyon County parcels, some additional islands. To the south is City of Fernley, the Victory Logistics District Plan Development. And to the west, we have additional Bureau of Reclamation parcels. And I will show that to you visually here in a second. Here is a vicinity map, both zoomed out and zoomed in, so you can see where this is located in the city. Here is a zoning and jurisdiction map. On the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see that the industrial zoning is located to the south. The site is presently zoned RR5, a Lyon County designation. And on the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see the county islands map identifying the subject site in blue. The zoning comparison is relatively simple here. As I mentioned, the site is currently zoned RR5, the previous Title 10 zoning classification for Lyon County. Lyon County has adopted additional updated zoning classifications. However, they have not conducted a county-wide consistency rezoning effort. And so that old RR5 Title 10 zoning classification is still present. This converts to GR20 upon annexation, general rural 20-acre minimum, further zone changes suiting the final proposed development, which is we have some preliminary information about that at this time, but nothing formal. Those zone changes could be achieved through a master plan and zoning map amendment depending on the final proposal. The annexation analysis is a slightly pared-down version of the annexation analysis because we are using alternative procedures set forth in NRS 268670. Because of the size of Lyon County and the size of the city, Lyon County does not have an annexation program or an annexation commission. So these alternative procedures would apply. When we look at the analysis and the required findings, we first look at NRS Chapter 268, powers and duties common to incorporated cities. Voluntary annexation petitions are processed under NRS 268670, which, as I mentioned, establishes some very specific alternatives. The criteria for that are relatively simple. All property owners must sign a petition requesting the annexation. The property must be contiguous with the city. And certain lands, such as those included in rights-of-way or those conveyed for airports or for noise abatement related to airports, may not be included. None of those stipulations apply here. The property is contiguous with the city, and the property owners have submitted the appropriate petition request for the annexation action. Does the request conform to the findings established for annexation? This is where we go into more detail. The location of the property to be considered, it is located in northeast Fernley, abutting an existing plan development. And I mentioned that plan development not so much so as to advocate for the annexation in service of that plan development, but to illustrate that this is not located in a remote portion of the city. It is immediately adjacent to lands that are already planned for development where development proposals are proceeding. We also look at the logical extension of city limits. The site is already within city limits. As I mentioned, it's a county island. So the city limits would not be expanded in order to complete this annexation request. Does the annexation meet the need for expansion to accommodate planned regional growth? Yes, it does. The parcel directly abuts an existing plan development and directly facilitates that project. And in facilitating that project, also facilitates regional growth. Where is existing and planned water and sewer service? Well, planned water and sewer service will become available at the southeast corner of the site as part of the Victory Logistics District improvements. Existing water and sewer service are further afield to the south. On the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see a depiction of the future planned water and sewer services that will become available near the southeast corner of the site. Community goals that would be met by the proposed annexation. This annexation does support several master plan goals and policies. I'll go over that in more detail on a future slide. And does the annexation support the efficient and cost-effective provision of service areas and capital facilities? Yes, we believe that it does. The annexation improves efficiency and cost efficacy by integrating this parcel into the city services and networks that are already in place. As a county island, it's very difficult for Lyon County to serve this parcel. It's completely encapsulated within the city of Fernley. And so it is more efficient to incorporate this parcel into those city infrastructure networks that are already in place or planned to be developed. A fiscal analysis has been provided for the proposed annexation, and it does document a net positive impact to the city. I do want to highlight that per staff direction, the applicants provided a fiscal analysis specifically for the annexation action as a zoning converted site. So ignoring any future preliminary plans that might be sort of simmering out there in the ether, because we do not have formal applications for those actions and we don't know exactly when or if those developments might occur, we've focused the fiscal analysis on strictly the zoning converted site post-annexation. And as I mentioned, that analysis does document a net positive impact to the city. Has Lyon County adopted a community management plan for the proposed annexation area? We could not locate a specific plan for this parcel, although per Lyon County's information, all county islands are part of a cooperative planning area. Does the annexation create any islands? No, it does not. It actually would eliminate an island. And any other factors concerning the proposed annexation that are appropriate for consideration, we haven't identified any at this time. Moving on and sort of circling back to the master plan goals and policies criterion. Does the property that is requested to be annexed conform to the master plan? It will support several goals and policies, including encouraging and planning for new development in areas where adequate public services and facilities can be provided efficiently. Again, by incorporating this parcel into the city of Fernley and eliminating a county island, we do enhance the efficacy of public services and facilities for the subject site. This also creates a growth pattern that assures flexible, feasible, and efficient projects. Again, by facilitating the plan development to the south, by providing an additional parcel for future development and utility citing, we do enhance the feasibility of the Victory Logistics District Plan Development project. Moving on, ensuring that appropriate levels of public services and facilities are continually provided. Again, this loops back to the same argument that by incorporating this parcel into city limits and serving it with city infrastructure and service networks, we enhance the levels of public services and facilities that can be provided to the parcel rather than continuing on with the current expectation that Lyon County would somehow serve this county island site. And finally, to the maximum extent possible, will the cost of improvement, extension, and construction of public facilities be borne by those developing the site? Yes, the developer in the future will be required to extend public services and facilities to the site. And so this community goal is also met. The last finding is that we must hold a public hearing and public notice must be given. We did provide a legal ad published in the RGJ on October 29. We also mailed notice to property owners in the vicinity on October 29. Notice will be provided to the Lyon County Commissioners prior to the next public hearing with city council when we move forward towards adoption. Because all the findings can be met, we do recommend approval for this annexation request. Should you choose to deny, I would ask, as I always do, that you state the specific finding that you feel cannot be met, as well as your supporting analysis, and that you repeat that for each applicable finding. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the planning commission? Yes, sir.
Yes, Robert Flores here. I just had a question regarding the, I meant, they mentioned in that they might use it for infrastructure relating to power generation. But does that mean that they're going to be building a power plant there eventually? Or is that inclusive? They could build a power plant or maybe a substation of some sort. They're not being very specific, but they didn't mention that.
They did mention that, and I also mentioned it in my staff report. Because this is a standalone application and because we don't have any formal knowledge of the future development of the site, the review and analysis is really pretty strictly focused on the annexation request itself. We do understand that future utility infrastructure may be proposed on this parcel. We don't know exactly what that might consist of, and we don't know when or if that will ultimately occur.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
No question. I'm all for the annexation here. But I just want to put it on the record, the same as Commissioner Flores, that if power generation is being proposed within our city limits, I would have tremendous concerns and a lot of questions about that.
Understood. And you would have the appropriate opportunity to act on that under any future discretionary entitlement applications.
Okay. Any other questions from the planning commission? Okay, this, any public input on this matter?
I believe the applicant has a presentation of their own.
Okay, very good.
Planning manager with Bowman Consulting. With me in the audience is Mr. Scott Barnes with Mark IV. We always prepare up our presentations, and Elisa did a great job in covering the basics of this. There's not too much you can do that's different when you're just talking about bringing a parcel in or out. So it's not like doing a conditional use permit. I think one of the key features here, factors in this, is really this property can't be served any other way than to the south. You've got the freeway, a federal highway up to the northern side, really the northern western side. And then you've got Bureau of Reclamation over to the eastern side. So all the utilities and roadways and any access would come in from the south. In terms of, you know, the name of the parcel, the ownership of the parcel is the M4 Victory Power parcel. Because this is on the outside of the development, it's anticipated that there would be energy-level infrastructure out there. That could be a substation or anything like that, or it could be something else. Anything would need to go back through a conditional use permit. So as Elisa said, there would be appropriate hearings. And right now, Scott can speak to it more, but I can tell you, they've been in discussions with NV Energy and trying to figure out what's going to be necessary out here. There are some big power users that they'll have coming into Mark, into the Victory Logistics District. And this is to help facilitate those. I won't go through slides because a lot of them are very duplicated, but we do stand available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I guess there's none. Thank you. Okay, now we can get to public input. Is there any public input on this matter? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. All right, any additional discussion with the planning commission? All right, okay. If there's no further, no discussion with staff, we go over there? No? Okay. All right. If that's all the discussion, can we get a motion on this matter? Commissioner Vanderheiden?
I'd like to make a motion, considering the analysis presented in the staff report and in the application materials, I move to recommend that the city council approve Bill 372 ANX 25001 and the annexation petition contained therein.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Can we please vote? Commissioner Lewis, are you?
I'm a yea.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that passes 7-2-0. All right, item 3.2. Discussion on possible action to recommend approval of bill number 363 associated with CAC 25006 to amend the Fernley Development Code dealing with daycare to implement the following. One, amend Title 32, Chapter 2, Section 030. Definitions to update the definitions of childcare facility and childcare in-home and add definitions for adult daycare. Two. Two, amend Title 32, Chapter 7, Section 150, daycare/childcare to make minor grammatical corrections and amend Table 32.07.150-1. Daycare/childcare use standards to update and expand on development standards. Three, amend Title 32, Chapter 9, Section 120, Table 32.09.120-2, parking ratios to make minor grammatical corrections. And four, amend Title 32, Chapter 6, Section 150. Unlisted uses and use table and amend Table 32.06.150-2 use tables to make minor grammatical corrections. Adjust where daycare uses are allowed and update required application types to establish this type in appropriate zoning districts. Yes, ma'am?
I know that was a mouthful. Lisa Warner, Assistant Planner for the Record. So as far as the background on this, local daycare providers and representatives with the children's cabinet have expressed frustration due to the difficulty of providing daycare services in Fernley. With that being said, staff has deemed it necessary to update the development code to address these concerns and update the daycare use in general to allow the use to be available in more zoning districts with the appropriate application. So even though there were a lot of things that you just went through, it touches in the code in a lot of different areas. So that's why it seems more expansive than it really is. But the changes that were made open up more potential daycare options to better serve the community and accommodate flexible work schedules. Changes to the development code include amending the following sections: the definitions, use tables, use standards and table, parking ratio table and the use table. So the proposed changes for daycare definitions, we updated the daycare definition and we updated the childcare in-home definition to more be, to be more in line with NRS. And then we added a definition for adult daycare, which we did not have before. For the proposed changes for the daycare use standards table, we added outdoors play hours. We added outdoor play area fencing requirements. And we wanted to ensure neighborhood compatibility. We added new standalone building design standards. And we updated the business licensing requirements, or just the standard, sorry. As far as proposed changes for the parking ratios table, there were a couple of grammatical errors. We fixed those. And there were no further changes to required parking. And then proposed daycare, proposed changes for the daycare use table, we edited some more minor grammatical errors. And we also adjusted where daycare uses are allowed. And we updated the required application types. So what we did was we went in and allowed daycare to be in more zoning areas. And we updated that to add a conditional use permit to be, to establish that use. The findings, it met all the findings, which were finding number one. The code amendments consistent with the city's master plan and is otherwise consistent with state and federal law. This finding is met because the master plan does not specifically address the development code. So there is no violation. And finding number two, public notice was given and a public hearing held per the requirements of the development code and NRS. Public notices were completed in the newspaper. And public hearings will be held at both the planning commission meeting tonight and at the future city council meeting. And then our recommended, our recommendation is to approve Bill 363 associated with Code Amendment 25006. And there's your recommendation, recommended motion language. Are there any questions?
I have none. Any other questions? Commissioner Holt?
Just clarifying that these things that are added or redlined or changed, they're going to affect all daycare, childcare facilities? Or only new businesses coming in will have to fall under these? Is there like a grandfather clause for existing as far as like playtime hours outside or opaque fencing or whatever? If they don't have that in place now, they have to put that in place or just for future?
It'll be anything being proposed in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wagner?
Just looking at the table amendments here. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So in a public facility, adult daycare would not be allowed, childcare in-home, I guess, in homes in public facilities are not. But a childcare facility would have to come to us first before being approved? If there's nothing in that table, it means that they are not allowed?
That would actually be a permitted use. So they would just be able to be allowed to go into that zone?
Okay, got it. But the square, or the rectangles that are blank here, what is the meaning of that? That they're not allowed at all?
They're not allowed at all.
Okay. So I guess just why would, why would we allow a childcare facility and not an adult daycare facility in some of these areas? It seems like a similar usage. I'm kind of looking at the industrial public facility EC and TC.
I'll let Michelle speak on that because she was the one that was meeting with the children's cabinet, etc., so.
Uh, daycare in the industrial, sorry, Michelle Rambo, planning commissioner, planning director. I don't know who I am today. It's the second time I screwed that up. The daycare in industrial areas is looked at more as a accessory use. So if you've got a big industrial user that wants to provide daycare for their employees, they could do that within their business. So it doesn't, you don't get that same thing for adult daycare, basically, is what I'm saying. They're handled differently in industrial areas.
Okay. I mean, I'm going to vote for this. I'm all for lessening restrictions. I think I'd like to see some consideration given to adult daycare being less restrictive, too. I think that's a huge need for a lot of families in our communities. That's my only comment.
So that's what I was going to say as well, is like if you have an, if a family has an adult child that, say, is aged out of school, so they can't go to school any longer, but the family has to go to work and they can't, they have to take them, so they can't go to daycare because they're 23 years old. So they would fall under that adult daycare.
Correct, correct.
You know, I mean, those families, too, need to be able to go to work and have their loved ones taken care of.
Yeah, absolutely. Good points. What we can do is that we can, if you want to do a motion to table this until the next meeting, we could go back and relook at that and bring it back to you. Or if you know a specific, you know, what zone you want them allowed in, you could make that part of your motion, and we can change it before we go to council.
The, as far as the use table, we did add the adult daycare in all of the zones with a conditional use permit. That's MDR 14 up through GR20. And then we are requiring an administrative review in multifamily 21, multifamily 30. And then it's permitted in a multi-use C1 and C2. The only ones that we did not include adult daycare in were TC, EC, industrial, and public facility. So it pretty much is allowed with applications in almost every zoning district.
So a specific example, I know the Douglas County Community Center, which would be a public facility for us, does have an adult daycare service offered directly through that community center. So again, just kind of advocating for adult daycare. I think I could easily see that happening here in our city as well. I'd really like to see that public facility at least have an adult daycare option for future development.
We can just add that to our motion. Unless you want to table it. Okay, okay. Okay, do we have any, any other discussion with planning commission?
I have a question, just real quick, if I could, please?
Yes, ma'am.
This got brought to us because the children's cabinet is, are they trying to come to Fernley? I guess that's probably obvious, but I'm totally for this, and I agree with Cody. We definitely need to start facilitating more care. So that would be my only question.
They came to me because there were people wanting to do daycare centers in town that, you know, it was very difficult and there were some pretty owner's restrictions on it in the old, in the current code. So they, they came to us and asked us to please consider reducing the requirements and letting it easier to get in.
Right, no, and they're fabulous, you know, they're a fabulous place to go and have available for us here. So that would be my only question. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else from the commission? Vietnam, do we have any public input on this matter? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Vietnam, I think, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Wagner?
I move to recommend that the city council approve Bill number 363 associated with CA 25006 with the following modifications. And that is to allow adult daycare with the same processes as outlined for childcare centers in the associated planning districts or planning zones.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second to that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we please vote? Commissioner Lewis?
I vote yea.
Thank you.
That was weird. Okay, thanks.
Okay, that passes 7-2-0. Okay, item 3.3, discussion on possible action on bill number 371 in association with CA 25005, a code amendment initiated by the city of Fernley to amend Title 32, Chapter 6, Section 150-2 use table and development code to allow the use of recreational facility major in the industrial zoning district with a conditional use permit. Yes, sir?
All righty. Good evening, commissioners. Tristan Rodriguez, Associate Planner for the Record. That's Tristan, pronounced like Preston but with the T. And I'm bringing you the first of three items I have tonight, CA 25005. So the purpose of this amendment is to update Title 32, Chapter 6, Section 150-2 of the development code to allow a recreational facility major use within the industrial zoning district. It also requires that any such use obtain approval through a conditional use permit. It also requires that any such use obtain approval through a conditional use permit. Lastly, this amendment addresses an existing discrepancy in our code as a longstanding racetrack is operating within the industrial zoning district without any approved, without any recorded approvals or entitlements. This change provides a clear and appropriate pathway for permitting. Under Fernley Development Code, a recreational facility major refers to large, generally outdoor recreational or entertainment facilities. Examples include racetracks, sports stadiums or arenas, amusement or theme parks, and drive-in theaters, to name a few. Additional uses are listed on the screen. The definition clearly establishes that a racetrack falls under the recreational facility major category. A longstanding racetrack currently occupy or operates within the industrial zoning district. However, the facility has no recorded approvals or entitlements under the current development code. Because the racetrack falls under the recreational facility major use category and because the use table shows a blank cell for this use in the industrial zoning district, the use is technically not permitted. As a result, the racetrack cannot obtain a conditional use permit or pursue any improvements or expansions. The code amendment corrects that issue by establishing a clear approval process. Industrial districts are intended to support higher intensity uses and are generally characterized by larger parcels, greater separation from residential areas, and higher thresholds for noise, lighting and traffic. These areas are also typically located near major transportation corridors, which improves access and circulation. Because of these characteristics, because of these characteristics, industrial zoning is an appropriate location for racetracks in similar large outdoor recreational uses. Requiring a conditional use permit ensures that each proposal is reviewed on a case-by-case basis. This allows the city to evaluate potential impacts related to noise, lighting, glare, dust, air quality, traffic, circulation, access, parking and hours of operation. The CUP process provides the city the flexibility to apply reasonable conditions that ensure compatibility with the surrounding industrial operations and future development while still aligning with the intent of the industrial zoning district and long-term planning goals. A development code text amendment may be approved if it is consistent with the city's master plan and with state and federal law, and a public notice must also be provided in accordance with Nevada revised statutes and the Fernley Municipal Code. This amendment meet, this amendment meets these requirements. The amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan and on the screen are a handful of goals and policies that this amendment supports. Allowing recreational facility major uses through a CUP maintains compatibility while offering flexibility. Public notice for this item was provided in accordance with Nevada revised statutes in the Fernley Municipal, Municipal Code. A legal ad was published in the Reno Gazette, Gazette Journal on October 29th, 2025. The recommended motion language is on the screen. Should you all wish to deny or modify, the motions are also presented on the screen. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the planning commission? Commissioner Flores?
Oh, sorry.
No, no problem. I just wanted, this is private property currently operated as that, is, is, this is not a public entity, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so they, they would have the right to change their minds and do something else with that racetrack area in the future, I presume, if they're the owners, right?
Um, so there is no entitlements. The business has not been legally established, so they are not able to expand or do anything because it has not been legally established.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to provide, jump in and provide a little background here. Michelle Rambo, planning director, I remember who I am now. This whole code change came into about, came about due to the recent parcels that we just acquired through the lands bill. The racetrack in question was currently on, was previously on BLM land. Now that it is city property, or it's next door to city property, they want to expand onto the city property a little bit. So they came in and asked us, you know, what they needed to do. And that, through that process, we discovered that they do not have any recorded approvals that we can find. So that's where this came from. So now we're just trying to clear the way for them so that they can, they can do any future expansions they might want to do, or we can give them, for instance, a temporary use permit for special event on our city property because we can't do that, we can't give a temporary use permit to an illegal use. So that's why we're, that we're going through this whole process.
Commissioner Lewis, did you have a question? Commissioner Lewis?
My button keeps switching off on me. No, Michelle explained what my question was about, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the commission? Any, anybody, any, uh, let's see, this is a public hearing, correct? Okay, is there any public input on this matter? All right, anybody on Zoom? Okay. I think we are ready for our motion. Commissioner Flores?
Considering the information provided by staff presentations and in the staff report, I move to recommend that the city council approve bill number 371 associated with CA 25005, amending the use table for recreational facility major as proposed and presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we please vote? Commissioner Lewis, how do you vote?
I vote yea.
Thank you. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, three point, oh, wait, hold please. 3.4, discussion and possible action on a conditional use permit application, CUP 25002, submitted by Scott Tate, Northern Nevada Comstock, to allow a plus or minus 12,194 square foot non-restricted gaming estab, establishment, Lucky Strike Casino in the general commercial zoning district on APN 021-201-60, generally located approximately 395 feet east of the intersection of Nevada Pacific Parkway and US Route 50 alternate. Yes, sir?
Alrighty, good evening commissioners, Tristan Rodriguez, associate planner for the record, bringing you the second of three items, CUP 25002, Lucky Strike Casino. The applicant proposes a non-restricted gaming establishment with bar and restaurant service. The project is approximately plus or minus 12,194 square feet. It would operate 24 hours a day and is located on a 1.76 acre C2 zoned parcel. The CUP is required because Fernley's development code requires a conditional use permit for non-restricted gaming establishment in the C2 zoning district. The site is outlined on the screen and is about 395 feet east of Nevada Pacific Parkway and US 50A. Surrounding context includes a gas station to the west located on a C2 zoned parcel. Additional C2 zoned parcels are to the east and south with industrial zoning to the north across US 50A. The project consists of a single-story 12,194 square foot building with a casino floor, bar and dining area, restaurant, kitchen, office and support spaces. The applicant proposes 88 parking spaces and landscape improvements. So on the screen are the proposed elevations, so I'll give you all a sec to take a look at those. The north is on the top left, south, top right, the west is the, the bottom left and the east is the bottom right there. Okay, what you're looking at now is the site plan showing the building layout and the parking layout. Give you a couple of seconds to take a look at that there.
So will the building be close to 50? Is that, where's 50 in conjunction to that?
Believe it is to the north, but the applicant has a presentation and can clarify all the specifics right after me, okay? Yeah, no problem. So under Nevada law, restricted gaming applies to 15 or fewer slot machines and does not allow table games or sports books. Non-restricted gaming applies to 16 or more slot machines or any slot machines accompanied by table games or a sports book. The applicant proposes non-restricted gaming. Fernley only has one gaming category, which is non-restricted gaming. There is no restricted gaming category in development code, thus all gaming applications must apply under the non-restricted category. This is where the technical issue arises. The Fernley Development Code defines a non-restricted gaming establishment as a resort hotel as defined in NRS and consisting of 16 or more slot machines. A key point is that Fernley's definition requires a resort hotel in addition to the gaming component. The proposal does not include lodging and is not grandfathered pre-2020 operation. This is the core issue of the reason staff must recommend denial. The applicant proposes non-restricted gaming, which is allowed in the C2 zoning district with the CUP. However, the city's adopted definition requires all non-restricted gaming to have a resort component. Because no lodging is proposed, the, the project cannot meet that adopted definition. This is not a zoning conflict, this is not a compatibility issue and not an infrastructure issue. It is strictly a technical inconsistency within the development code's definition. So on the screen are the conditional use permit findings. Staff can make all findings except finding A, which requires that the proposed use be in compliance with the comprehensive master plan. While the site is suitable for commercial development and the use is generally compatible with the surrounding properties, the master plan must be implemented through the development code. Because the project cannot meet the city's definition of a non-restricted gaming establishment, finding A cannot be made, and like I said, findings B through F can be made. So finding A states that the proposed conditional use must be in compliance with the comprehensive master plan. The site is zoned general commercial, which supports highway, highway oriented and, and entertainment uses. So on the surface, it aligns with the plan's land use intent. However, the master plan's policies must be implemented through the city's adopted development code. Under that code, a non-restricted gaming establishment must also be a resort hotel as defined in NRS. Because the proposal does not include lodging, it cannot meet that adopted definition and therefore cannot be found in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Again, this is purely a definition level conflict. It is not related to zoning, compatibility or traffic, and for that reason, we must recommend denial. So the denial language will be here on the next slide and this is kind of sort of repeats what I've just indicated. It was not established prior to 2020 and it does not meet the adopted definition of the gaming establishments, non-restricted or the resort hotel, I should say. So on the screen is the recommended motion, as well, as well as an alternative motion should you all wish to approve. And the recommended, recommended motion is on the screen here and the applicant is here to answer any questions and he has a presentation for you all as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of the property owner, Scott Tate. And Mr. Tate is here, he's, he's, he lives in Northern Nevada, he's an experienced gaming operator, so if there were operational questions for him, he'd be happy to come up here and answer, or even just if you wanted to say hello to him. So the, the point of my presentation is going to be that you can approve this application and be in agreement with state law and with Fernley code. So I'll, I'll get to those details in a second, but first I'd like to say that Michelle and Tristan have, have done a very good job on this application. They've been very responsive. It's been a pleasure working with them. We don't have any personal, hard feelings over working with them. They, they've done their best to, to, to be accepting and to represent Fernley's position. We're simply at a difference of, of how the code is read. And I'll do my best to not repeat what Tristan already said. He did a good job of describing the project. A small new casino building on a currently vacant lot. So there it is. You can see we are adjacent to Highway 50, so visible from the highway. I think it's a great spot for a commercial enterprise. No houses directly adjacent to the site. Good road access, that's the site plan again. As far as traffic, traffic generation is moderate and in fact, a lot of the, a lot of our guests are going to be passed by traffic, people coming home from work and just stopping there. So probably not generating completely new trips, but people stopping on an existing trip. We're zoned for it, commercial zoning, industrial zoning across the street. No changes to the zoning or master plan required. The use is allowed with a conditional use permit. Very moderate sized building, 25 feet tall. We're adjacent to a gas station, comparable building to this. So again, I, I think it's a, I, I think it's an appropriate use. And in fact, it's a kind of a classic feathering of zoning intensity. You have the highway, you got intense commercial uses, near us likely to be some apartments in the future, and then transitioning to single-family housing. So that's a very classic layout of, of, of land uses. Owner's experienced, he, he knows the business, he can, he's capable of evaluating whether Fernley can support a business of this type and he thinks it can. So I, I think it's a reasonable investment. Again, traffic, roads around the project are, are adequate. Highway 50 certainly is, is capable of handling this traffic. And it, in terms of noise impacts, the building could serve as a partial buffer to, to some of the residential to the south. So development along the highway is likely to act as a sort of a fence or a screen to, to that traffic from the residential areas to the south. So now here we get into the real core of this. So Tristan expressed that Fernley code requires a resort hotel, and I'm going to argue that it doesn't. So non-restricted gaming is allowed in the C2 zone, that's what we're applying for. Line two, Fernley code defines gaming as a resort ho, hotel as defined in NRS 4630165. So you go to NRS, looking at line three, and it defines resort hotel requirements based on county population. So in a county with 700,000 people or more, you need a 200-room hotel. In a county with 100,000 to 700,000 people, you need a 300-room hotel. So line four, I went to the US Census Bureau and found that Lyon County has a population of 63,000 people. In other words, Lyon County does not appear in that line three definition of what NRS requires. It simply isn't addressed. So line five, NRS does not require a hotel in a county with this population level. Lyon County is not in the NRS definition. That's the definition that Fernley code addresses. So line six, kind of a summary, Fernley code references NRS, but NRS does not address Lyon County. Line seven, the conclusion, there is no hotel requirement for this project. So that's our difference of opinion. I'm not going to try to explain staff's position, that's something they're capable of doing that. But that's where we are and we, you know, we, we reviewed this before we made the application and it was our conclusion that, that the project is approvable. So that's really the bulk of my, of my presentation. But in summary, we're on a major highway or on commercial property, we're on a site surrounded by development, it's compatible with the city and with the neighborhood, and importantly, it's a project similar in size, intensity and land uses to, to other operations in the area. So this is an existing business plan, the scene in So this is an existing business plan uh seen in the area that proves to be functional. Um, so the last word for me is there's no functional or legal requirement to prohibit investment on this site. Um, so again, it's been a pleasure to work with staff. I think they've done a great job. We have different ways of reading the code. Uh, so I can, I can elaborate as needed. Happy to answer questions or or respond to whatever questions people have. Thank you.
I have, I have a quick question for you. Um, just, so I I actually like this project. Um, but we did get a letter from um someone not liking this project. And one of their comments was that it was so close to a school. So I know that the Nevada State Gaming Board does have requirements, how far a casino has to be away from a school. So if this is your guys' business, I'm sure you're aware of that requirement. And can you tell me that you are within those regulations of being far enough away from the school that is not super close, but it is kind of in that general neighborhood?
Yes, uh, we do comply with that, uh, and in fact, staff didn't have concerns on that level, so that that hasn't.
No, it's just a comment from um one of somebody in the neighborhood that said.
And and this is an area where I.
And it was very close to a school.
Sure, I I'm, I'm comfortable with the local operator. Mr. Tate, he knows his business. He knows how to run a a pleasant and attractive operation. So yeah, there's not going to be people camping in the parking lot or selling drugs, things like that.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but we're following the Nevada State Gaming Law as far as appro- as far as where we are with consideration to a school.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. That was my question.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Wagner?
Um, access to the area, i- it looks like all the traffic would come through the roundabout and go that way. There's no direct access off fifty. Is that right?
There is, we do have a driveway off of fifty.
Oh, you do?
There's an entry-only driveway off of fifty. Um, and then there's access from Nevada, Nevada Pacific Boulevard.
So as cars are entering directly from fifty, is there's going to be some sort of right turn lane, deceleration lane? How is that going to work with sixty-five mile an hour traffic?
Luckily, our engineer is here, so I'm going to, I'm going to hand that off to him.
Hello, uh, Brian Moon with Loomis and Associates. For the record, uh, there is already an existing right turn pocket, decel pocket that turns into that area.
Okay, and so that's what's going to be used for this?
Yes, yes, and it is strictly for that right turn only into the site.
Okay, and then I think we recently approved some multifamily right around in the parcels around this. Would that multifamily be serviced through the same turn lane in? Or did, would they all have to go through that roundabout as well?
It would be able to come in through that area as well, but I think primarily the main access is going to be through the roundabout.
Okay, so I um I'm just looking at the map. This uh access from fifty goes right into your parking lot? Or is there like a side street that goes into?
Yeah, there's, there's an access road.
Okay, I think that that kind of answers that. And then um I know one of the concerns with the neighborhood to the east. Right now, I believe uh it's barricaded, but there is a road that's going to go through to that neighborhood. Is that right?
I'm not aware of another road that continues. Right now, it all access tees at that access road that runs north-south off of fifty and comes uh east-west. It just tees. There is currently no plans for um access to.
Direct access to that neighborhood. Okay.
Commissioner Holt?
Um, I wasn't aware that we had a letter from a neighbor, but I also haven't heard unless I missed it that the neighbors were notified. Has that step taken place? Do the neighbors have no contention with what's happened so far with the idea of this, to be here to speak on it themselves?
I I believe city staff has policy.
Yes, it was um posted in the Reno Gazette, and letters were sent to property owners within seven hundred and fifty feet of the.
Seven hundred and fifty feet of where the establishment would be. Do we know how many houses that was actually?
Ooh, I don't know. Yeah. Do not know.
Um, my other question might be more geared towards staff as well, which is it sounds like in two thousand twenty is when the discussion was more focused on changing to the emphasis of like the resort and lodging. Is that because the NRS code changed? Or we became aware of it, and we're trying to fit that? Is that because there was discussion as to why that's a better option? What was the thought process on why that's been adopted then?
Uh, Michelle Rambo, Planning Director. Uh, that, the new code came into effect in two thousand twenty, and that was copied from another city and got missed in translation. So um probably did not intend for it to be in there. It just didn't get caught.
And Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. Um, I will add my two cents in that I researched this topic as well. Um, and obviously, I can never say to the Planning Commission, ignore um what is in the code. Uh, however, I cannot find any policy or justifiable policy or reason why that resort hotel requirement exists in the code.
But we can also confirm, there was no discussion at that time where somebody said it was beneficial to the city because X, Y, Z, it just kind of got swept in with other stuff.
It was swept in with other things. Um, and from my review of it, it doesn't look like it went through legal review before it was approved. Um, and there was no discussion, certainly with that with legal in regards to why that was included or with anybody else.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Aaron Mortson, very briefly, you said there was a letter. Has that letter been included in the record? I want to make sure that any letter that has been provided and is being reviewed by Planning Commission is also included in the record for the public for purposes of open meeting law.
Um, I have never received a letter.
Okay, Commissioner Holt, you want to read that letter?
Do I also give the letter writer's name?
I don't know.
Uh, I would treat it as a public comment, and I would include as a public comment by that letter owner and then have read the record.
Marcus Pierce, who lives at one-one-one-four Reed Circle in Fernley, says, Fernley Planning Department, this letter is to inform you of my strong opposition to the building of the Lucky Strike Casino on Highway fifty next to the Donner Trail subdivision that has been there for over twenty-three years. There are seven-plus gaming establishments in Fernley, and none are near or in a residential area other than the Pioneer that was built before any homes were near it. The placement of a casino in this location would have severe negative impact on dozens of middle-class family homes. These impacts include increased traffic, noise, lights, and property values. If the plan includes opening up the Reed Way Stub Road, it would include increased traffic through our subdivision, possibly including impaired drivers trying to use the back way out to avoid law enforcement. With all the open land in the area for this type of business, why would anyone consider approving this permit, knowing the negative impact it will have for the area that also includes a middle school a few blocks away? Thank you for your consideration, Marcus Pierce.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Flores?
Yeah, you mentioned that there was going to be a restaurant service at this casino. Uh, I couldn't tell from the floor plan about how many, how many seedings there would be for the restaurant, because the casino is not very large. So is it more like a snack shop? Because I'm sure that the people in East, East Fernley wouldn't wouldn't mind a restaurant on that side, but uh.
Um, no, it's a full restaurant. Um, I I don't have a a a seat count, but uh it's it's several thousand square feet within the building. Yeah, yeah, it's a full restaurant.
So it's not a snack shop. It's actually a real restaurant. Okay, that's one thing to know. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, do we have?
Up to uh maybe the the legal, uh, legal things.
Go ahead.
Uh, most people are aware that uh in the state where I come from, the state legislature can regulate zoning directly upon a city. I don't know if that's the case in this, in in this state. Is that true? Uh, uh, overall in Nevada?
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. I I imagine that this is possible, they could, but for the most part, they have left it to the cities, and I can't think of anything in the city of Fernley where anything's been imposed from the state level onto the city of Fernley.
But they could, because I I I I know in that other state, they actually went down because they wanted to increase housing. They actually allowed higher-density housing in more restricted zoning, and they allowed, like, you know, mu- multiplexes where they weren't there before. So the state could do that if the legislate, if it passed a a bill, right?
That's correct. Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. All powers that the city has are derived from the state, and so um the state has that full authority to be able to tell the cities what to do in terms of how to handle a zoning issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Okay, this uh.
I have a quick question. Um, and I apologize because I'm out of town, but again, can we review um the one condition that hasn't been met to the satisfaction again real quick?
Sure.
Yeah.
Do we mind getting my presentation back up? Perfect. Thank you, Madam Clark. Alrighty, what questions do we have? Commissioner Lewis?
Okay, I just wanted to just make sure that I'm very clear, since we don't get these until we are presented here in the meeting. Um, the Fernley defines non-restricted gaming as a resort hotel. The project does not provide. So what we're trying to say is that they have to have a hotel there? Is is that where we're trying to go here?
A- Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. Under the, under the code as we read it, and developers have obviously different opinion, um, it seems to indicate that a resort hotel would be required if they want to build a gaming establishment. Um, and that is what the code says. Now, I can't explain why we included that in the code. Normally, there are requirements over a hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand population for that in regards to resort hotels. Um, but that is included in our code, and because this doesn't include a a resort hotel, it does not technically meet what the code requires.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're very clear. So how do we fix that?
It would require a a amendment to the code, and I believe that planning, the planning director is already working on an amendment to the code. That's pretty exhaustive and will include this.
Yes, um, we are working, um, starting to work just in the last week or so on a code amendment to get rid of this whole resort hotel thing.
Okay, so then can we just continue this item until we? I I I mean, I'd hate, I I like the idea of it, quite frankly. Um.
Well, I think that they said that we could approve it.
And Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, if you want to have a brief recess and do a legal brief, I can, I can discuss that issue.
No, I, so I don't, I personally, I don't think that we really need a legal brief. I think that we can still approve it, because like the gentleman had explained, we're less than seven hundred thousand. So it's it's kind of.
But we're going against the code as it exists in writing.
That is, uh, that is correct. Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. Um, Commissioner.
It has to be fixed before we can approve it.
If you, if you determine that the developer's interpretation of the code is appropriate and correct, then you could approve this and find that that finding has been made.
Also, Michelle Rambo, Planning Director, you have, you ha- it's your prerogative if you want to ignore code. And and.
Okay, that's a first.
Oh, man.
No, just. You, you have that ability as a decision-making body. You can leave requirements.
We can't deny subdivisions, but we have to deny a hotel. Okay.
That's a different subject.
I know it is. So that's my two cents. So I don't know where to go from here. If we continue it, or what what do we want to do here?
I have a plan. Okay, I have a plan. Okay, so any, no public input? Oh, oh, we do have some public input. Hold please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, my name is Tammy. I live um in the Donner Trails subdivision. My house would actually be right next to the parking lot, and I have some concern about it. Would there be another like fence or brick wall put up in between my house and the parking lot?
Well, I believe that there's a lot between, yes, Michelle Rambo, Planning Director, there is another vacant lot in between this and the houses. So nothing will be a directly adjacent to the houses.
Uh, in in case it helps, uh, we'd be happy to um meet with the neighbors on site and talk about landscaping that could help alleviate some of those concerns.
Oh, that would be nice.
Sure.
That would be nice. Um, some of my other concerns is, is this going to affect um property value?
Was that a question, or what was that?
Yes, it was a question.
Oh, um, my response to that is I've I've never seen investment in an area reduce values. Uh, I I think this is a compatible project with a good manager and owner, uh, and I I think it would be desired by many people in the area.
Because I know that he, um, Scott Tate owns the Nugget um on Main Street and Wigwam, and the, I've been there several times for like Black Bear um to eat and whatnot. There's just some unsavior characters. Um, would there be more? Be more strict since it's closer to a residential neighborhood with children?
Um, we we have the owner and uh one of his staff here. Uh, if if you had specifics about operations, I'm sure they'd be happy to make a statement. Uh, but yes, there's going to be internal and and external site security and video uh, video monitoring equipment.
Okay.
Okay, is that, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other public input? Okay. Be it none, any other discussion with the Planning Commission? All right, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Wagner?
Based on the information provided in the staff report and as presented in the staff presentation, I move to approve the conditional use permit associated with CUP two-five-zero-zero-two Lucky Strike Casino. Subject to conditions of approval, one through twenty-one is presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Can we get a second?
Oh, second.
Can, can we also add to that, that we need to go back and make this correction in our code? I know Michelle's working on it, but do we need to put it in writing as a request?
A- Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. I think we can make that res- um, request independently, but I don't think we can make it a condition, because they don't have the power to make us pass a code change.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Okay, very good. So we have a motion. We have a second. Let's vote. Commissioner Lewis, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Right, three point five? Consideration and possible action on a request from the Planning Department to amend the city Fernley Development Code. Title thirty-two, Chapter nine, Section seventy, grading, and Chapter two, Section thirty. Definitions to add definitions for grubbing, standard grading, engineered grading, and to clarify grading permit thresholds, slope limitations, erosion, and dust control, inspection, bonding, and enforcement requirements. Bill number three-seventy, CA two-five-zero-zero-four. Yes, sir?
Alrighty, good evening, Commissioners. Tristan Rodriguez, Associate Planner for the Record, and I'm bringing you my last of three items tonight. CA twenty-five-zero-zero-four. And I'll pause briefly. Alrighty, so the purpose of this amendment is to update and clarify the city's grading standards. Specifically, it adds three new definitions, grubbing, standard grading, and engineered grading, so that we can better distinguish between small-scale site preparation and larger engineered grading activities. It also clarifies permit thresholds and strengthens our requirements for erosion control, dust suppression, slope protection, and stormwater management. Overall, the goal is to create cleaner expectations for applicants, more consistent enforcement, and improve environmental protection. Our current grading code does not clearly distinguish between small s- uh, small-site preparation and. Our current grading code does not clearly distinguish between small, uh, small site preparation and large-scale engineered earthwork. This amendment creates, uh, cleaner, more enforceable thresholds and modernized standards that align with current engineering. And environmental best practices. This amendment was developed collaboratively between the planning and engineering departments. This slide highlights the three new definitions being added to the development code. First is engineering, engineering, engineered grading. This applies to larger and more complex grading projects. Anything over five thousand cubic yards, cuts or fills, um, fifteen feet or greater. Grading on slopes of twenty percent or more, or when a geotechnical review is needed. These projects must be designed and reviewed by the, by a Nevada licensed civil engineer and when applicable, a geotechnical engineer. Second is grubbing, which refers to the removing and disposing of stumps, roots, brush, and other organic material. From the ground surface in preparation for grading or construction. And third is standard grading. This includes smaller grading activities that fall below the thresholds of engineered grading. So less than five thousand cubic yards or cuts or fills fifteen feet, uh, under fifteen feet and slopes under twenty percent. These definitions provide cl- uh, clarity, so applicants, staff, and inspectors all have the same understanding of what level of review is required. This slide summarize- summarizes the new standards introduced by the amendments. First, any grading over fifty cubic yards or any clearing or grubbing of one acre or more. Must now be performed under a grading permit or a building permit. Grading on slopes greater than ten percent may be restricted and grading on slopes twenty percent or more will require an engineered grading plan. Or geotechnical review. An erosion settlement control is required for any disturbance of one acre or more. And a stormwater pollution prevention plan or SWIP is required for projects of the same size. In accordance with NDEP requirements. For larger project, for larger projects disturbing five acres or more. A dust control plan will also be required. The amendment further clarifies inspection requirements, establishes permit expiration timelines. And strengthens enforcement tools, including the ability to issue stop work orders or civil penalties. For unpermitted or non-compliant grading. Overall, these updates modernize the code, improve accountability. And prevent environmental and drainage impacts before they occur. A development code text amendment may be approved if it is consistent with the city's master plan and with state, federal law. And a public notice must also be provided in accordance with Nevada revised statutes in the Fernley Municipal Code. This amendment meets those requirements. This amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the city's master plan. It promotes public safety, environmental protection, and responsible development by clarifying grading, erosion controls, stormwater. And slope standards. These updates directly support master plan policies related to drainage, slope stability. And sustainable land disturbance practices. By clearing, uh, by setting clear thresholds and engineering standards. The, the amendment helps ensure that grading activities are safe, well-managed, and compatible with surrounding development. Um, let's see here. Public notice for this item, uh, was provided in accordance with Nevada revised statutes. Um, and Fernley Municipal Code, a, a legal ad was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. The approval language is on the board. And should you all wish to deny or modify, those motions are also presented on the screen as well. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I can help answer any questions as well as city engineer. Uh, Maria Paz Hernandez can help as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, any questions on this matter from the planning commission? Yes, ma'am?
Just to ask, anything less than an acre requires no permit or process for smaller projects of that size? Or this just doesn't affect what's already in place with that?
Maria Paz Fernandez, City Engineer, uh, anything under fifty cubic yards does not require a permit and that's no change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Do we have any public input on this matter? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Any additional discussion with the planning commission? Okay. Alright, I think we are ready for a motion. Oh, a verbal vote? Okay, verbal vote it is. Okay, um, can I, let's start with a motion. Can I get a motion?
Considering the information provided by staff presentations and in the staff report, I move to recommend that the city. Uh, council approve bill number three seven zero. Associated with CA two five zero zero four amending chapter thirty-two point oh nine point oh seven oh grading. And chapter thirty-two point oh two point oh three oh definitions of the Fernley Development Code as proposed and presented by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion. Can I get a second? Commissioner Flores?
I second that motion.
Okay, let's vote. We do have to take a verbal vote. So, uh, Commissioner Lewis, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Commissioner Vanderheiden?
Yay.
Yay. Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
I, Commissioner McCullar, yes. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores? That passes seven to zero. Okay, um, our four point one item, chair and commission items. Discussion and possible action regarding potential inconsistencies within the development code. That item was requested by Commissioner Garvin. She is out sick tonight, so, uh, do we have to take a vote to?
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, no, you can just go ahead and table it.
Okay, we're gonna table that till next time. Yes, please.
When we bring it back, I know I was very confused last meeting about adjacency standards and some of the definitions there. So I was just requesting maybe education on that along with that item.
Well, you'll be happy to know that we are also tired of the adjacency questions. So, um, we are rewriting the code. Um, not necessarily changing the language and the requirements so much as we are just separating things out and making things clearer to understand. So, um, that will be coming to you maybe December, um, more likely January. Um, so you'll be seeing that because, yes, we agree, we're tired of talking about it.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, any other commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for item three point four, I'm not sure if the vote displayed incorrectly, um, but I voted no online and it displayed as yes. So just for the record, I'd like that to, to show.
Okay. Um, I think, oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Um, just my general statement, and I'm trying to find the right words for it, is I understand that as the city comes up and gives us their. Presentation, they tell us everything that we have to know in order to make a decision. How do I request that you would also tell us what you think we would want to know without us having to write, ask the right questions? To get the information that you think could also be pertinent to us making a decision. Such as the casino ruling standards stuff.
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, that's a hard question because ultimately I think we try to present to you all the information. Um, in the presentation that we think is, is relevant or necessary and then hope for questions. Um, it's difficult though, as, as has been pointed out, it was a technical denial in this case. Because it is the obligation of the city to comply with the code. We can't recommend or, or, or do something that does not comply with the code. And so I realize sometimes it's kind of hard to convey, um, but if you have questions, help and that, and I will try our best to include everything in the presentation again.
And I'll throw in for just my two cents, uh, Michelle Rambo.
Yeah.
Um, if you have questions or something, you want something addressed, you can always call me ahead of time. And you know, hey, I have a question about this, can, you know, and then I can tell the planner who's in doing the presentation to add that in.
I just, this isn't the first time I felt that way, but I just feel like sometimes I don't know the question to ask to get the information that I think would be helpful too. And I'm sure that happens often, but that sometimes there's more information that probably in general would be helpful, but I get your guys' stance on it. I'm just asking if there's ever a possibility to share more information, even if it's more than what's required to share, that I think we would all appreciate it.
Yeah, understood. And it's, you know, hard for us to know what issues are gonna be brought up too or what you're gonna, what questions you guys are gonna have. So we try and anticipate, but we're gonna miss some here and there.
Okay, very good. So item, any, any more? From the planning commission?
I just, I, I just want to make sure that, um, that was the first that I had heard of that letter. I don't know if that letter came in today. Um, but that information, uh, doesn't sound like Juliana got it either.
Um, I got it a while ago. Yeah, it was emailed. Let's see. I received it on Monday. When did you get it, Mr. Flores? It, it went to our city email.
Yeah, and again, I, I have to keep reminding everybody, uh, my city email isn't working. And so I get all of my communication through my other email address, so.
Well, we need to get your city email working then.
We've tried.
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, is there anybody else's email that is not working? Okay, um, I'm going to reach out to John tomorrow in tech. Have you spoken to him yet? And I'm gonna try to get him to fix that email because I think it's essential that you have a functioning city email.
Yeah, no, and I would agree. Um, Brendan, I've been, we've tried to work on it, but, um. It's a matter of me coming down there with my computer or my iPad.
Okay, and I'll let John know and I'll have him reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Uh, planning director items.
Alright, um, as far as five point one, the update for the city council actions. Um, as you know, last planning commission meeting was canceled, so there's quite a bit, um, to catch you up on. Um, we had, uh, the code amendment, the code amendments for home occupation and the trash enclosures both went through. And were adopted by council. Um, the tentative subdivision map for Chaparral was tabled for, to deal with some drainage issues. Um, there's no update on that that I know of, so, um, I can't tell you where they are. Um, the development agreement, uh, in. Amendment, that's the word I'm looking for, um, for Red Hawk was approved. The zoning map amendment for the Mayor's Park down on Farm District Road was approved. And the master plan amendment for the small property at Sage and ninety-five was also approved. Um, five point two, just a general, uh, department updates. Um, we have, um, gone through a very lengthy process. And finally have picked a consultant to work on the master plan update. The, you know, the whole rewrite of the master plan. So, um, that will be starting. Um, probably, well, we're having meetings, but it'll really get started in January. And you will be involved in that process pretty heavily since the master plan is your document. So, um, stay tuned. And that's all I've got.
Okay, very good. Alright, this is the portion of the meeting devoted to the public. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or use the. Raise your hand feature in Zoom star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. Is there any public input? If you're speaking at the podium, please print your name on the sheet provided. No? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Uh, this meeting, our next meeting will be December tenth at five P M. This meeting is adjourned.